Okay.
Oh, that's my. No. I have this computer hooked to the. Oh, I'm just gonna sign under the zoom on that computer too. So when we have our presenter from for board docs here. To swap over and put this on the zoom as well. That way, otherwise you won't see him or what he's presenting to you. Okay, I'll make us clear this one.
Here, or I guess she could just get started.
And so.
She could just.
Yeah.
Just skip over or let's get you all this. That works. Are you ready to start that?
So the recording is on.
Okay.
So we're set.
Okay. All right, call this meeting to order at 5:03. Okay, I'd like to call meeting order, acknowledge that it's tomorrow's district since on the ancestral lands of Spawis, Swat, Island, and Chingas people. I think these caretakers of the land who have lived on and continue to live on the land is time in memorial. Please rise as I do as in place.
With the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands. In this little liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, I'd like to remind members of the public, and if you wish to adjust the board's public comments, you will need to email your name and topic to Becky Powell at B E C K Y dot P O W E L L at Tomater dot K one two dot W A dot U S. Or sign up at the sign in sheet right here if you're here in person. Comments must be submitted, or your name has to be submitted to Becky by no later than 5:10. When we reach public comment portion of the agenda, Becky will read off your name. Make you a panelist if you're on Zoom, so you're able to be seen or you'll be given the opportunity to read your comments. The initial speaker gets five minutes and then additional speakers on the same topic get three minutes for a total of 20 minutes of any one topic. Becky, the service time keeper will notify you when your turn is up. If you do not sign up in time and are not able to address the board, you are welcome to email your comments to board and your superintendent. So Superintendent Dawson, has there been any changes or additions to the agenda since it was published?
No changes since last published and reprinted. I would just share what we're hoping that I want to welcome Jennifer Brier to, who's joining us the first time, who's going to be our finance director as we're in that transition right now. So welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you so much. We're happy to have you join us in our company. So. We don't have to make any motion. There are no changes. Now we move on to meeting minutes, because everyone got checks to review the minutes from June 17.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, sorry. It's me needing second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion passes. Now we move on to consent agenda. Has the board had an opportunity to view the items on the consent agenda? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Right, now we move on to public comment. That was clear. Anyone sign? I know, look at how efficient we are.
Yeah.
No one signed up and.
But it's not right.
No, all right, we'll come back to it if anyone can ask. Okay. Reports to the board. Sorry.
We're super early and is he on?
I'm just checking to see, he has not signed, our first presenter has not signed on yet, our second presenter is not here yet.
Can we work on the resolution of the waiver?
We could, we could. We could move back to an item on that, so.
Thank you. I am actually thinking about actions.
Those were. This one or two. But. See you next time. So we need to, to, to understand.
Yes. All right. We'll see. Yeah. This is huge. You're welcome. It should, you know, water, you have water. We don't. Say that. Do you have a drink?
Water. So. We have.
Yeah.
That's not very nice. Oh, we want to make sure we can get our speakers out here.
Yeah.
So that's.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Do you have a good mask, guy?
Yeah.
Big shoes.
Well, we're really excited to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Sure. Okay.
For the board.
It may be hard. There are some now, so we have to see your speakers.
Yeah, you aren't seeing yourselves up there.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah. I'll be happy to stay.
We know our speakers come on, that's what we do.
All right, good, so yeah.
Oh, we have someone who's there.
So, no, that's me. I thought, oh, we have our speaker.
So let's talk about, thanks for the patience there. So we can go to our agenda item, our action item, resolution.
Okay.
So, and I'll invite Sean Batson to jump in with it as well. Do you want to pick us up from top, or would you rather I pick us up?
I can go either way. Why don't I start a little bit with the idea behind the resolution, right? Just for some context of what's happening. So last year, we had the chance to pilot an opportunity that really took a look at engaging with students and families to better understand their needs before the start of the year. Call a strong start.
Do you want to maybe stay here so you can address all of us so I'm not looking at the side?
Yeah. A pilot in an opportunity called Strong Start, and that Strong Start opportunity was an idea we had that would connect families and students to the work. It would give teachers a chance to better understand student family needs and would give us a chance to make sure that we were as prepared as we could be before the start of the year. This year, we wanted to think about Strong Start a little bit differently. And what we ended up doing is going out and asking different levels, high school, middle level, and elementary, kind of where we wanted to be with regards to this work. And really where the most need is felt for our work around Strong Starts this year is with the elementarys. There's a couple of things we've done in order to make sure that this was something we wanted to do. One is the principals went out and talked with their families and their staff and really started to get some, generate some momentum around, would this be a good idea for us to do? And so those principals have done that work. The second part of that, though, is the resolution for the board that says, hey, are you okay with us utilizing three days as Strong Start conferences? With us to meet with students and families to make sure we have the same opportunity to start off the school year in a way that is both positive for students and families. So to give you an idea about why this is important, we talked to our principals about what would it look like if we were to create a space where we did conferences of words of an hour, half hour, 30, 45 minutes or an hour, where we accomplished multiple tasks. One is, we would better understand student family needs as we mentioned, right? So we want to make sure that we sit down with families and say, what was your year like last year? How did this work for you? What things did your students struggle with? What are some big ideas we want to make sure we capture before we start the year? It also gives us a chance to clarify building-wide expectations at the school level, right? So one of the things we know about the start of the year is we want to make sure what's called PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, are pretty clear to students and families. So if we have masking requirements or any COVID requirements that are still out there or just building level kinds of things we want to do, we can make sure that we set students and families up for success by clarifying expectations. That also works with kids being comfortable in their classroom settings and perhaps looking around the building. Now, when Sean and I met with the TDA and principals, they also had some ideas that we think are good extensions of this as well. How about making sure that transportation is up and ready to go while we're having those conferences? Maybe having a bus out there where students can get on and kind of just be familiar with what that looks like. Also looking at food service and making sure if applications are required to those things, we're in a position to do this work. And last but not least, they really wanted a chance to start thinking about pre-assessment. So one of the things we don't often get to do before the year starts is to really do some basic entry-level assessments that can give us a sense of what kids need to know and understand before we get started. So the context for this work was really us going back with the TDA and our principals and the teacher leaders and kind of saying, what are your thoughts about this? We utilized it that way. And there is a lot of support for this work to happen at the elementary level of K through five, so our families can start in the right direction. So what you have in front of you is a resolution that says, would you, as a school board, be prepared to support a strong start school year that would give up three days for conferences? And how the process works is if you approve the resolution and we move forward, then we put in message with the OSPI and we say, hey, our board's resolution just passed, we believe this is a good, successful start for the beginning of our year, and we would move forward with that work. Now, sometimes a question comes up, it's three days of instruction. And I will tell you, there's one thing I've learned about the system of education, it's that it is better to clarify expectations, start families off in a positive and strong way and make sure everybody's on the same page. You will get your return on investment of a three days of conferences easily when it comes to instructional support. So as a student learning representative, I would tell you, those are positive ways to make sure that we're in a good place to begin.
I would just add that we also offset some time. We took one of the half-days off of our November conferences. Last year, we had five days for November, five days for March. We reduced that to four in November and four in March. So it's not actually a full lots of three days, that breaks back one of them. So we did try to do a partial offset in the calendar development too, so that we're maximizing time but also gaining the benefit of the strong start of what we saw as a really successful model last year. And pretty important is we still have some students that are coming back for the first time to their classrooms who were remote last year, who will be returning for the very first time to their classrooms since March of 2020. Actually, yeah, here we are, March 2020. And as well as really there, as they're making this transition, even for kids who are with us, they've got a fairly short time back for some of our first graders that are coming back from remote, they've still never been in the classroom.
Right. And families have lots of questions too, right? Just a, just a good opportunity to thank for that engagement force. And we're reading a lot about reinvesting, you know, rebounding, all these words that you get to hear about what's coming back. And the core of those is about establishing good relationships, right, in your systems. An opportunity for you to consider the resolution and to think about those strong starts as an option for some.
Questions?
Will this be a part of our academic recovery plan? Yes, yes, we see this as, I mean, that's really what our experts will see this as, as part of that academic recovery plan. Now, one of the things that we believe we're going to need to do after this also, though, is evaluate how to go, get some feedback from people after, say, how did this go for our teachers, how did it go for our families? Because it is something we haven't tried other than last year, which was such a disruptive, different year, we've got kids coming back. Trying it when our students are coming into the classroom. If we determine their substantial academic benefit and benefits, students and teachers, then we can evaluate, is that something we want to do again in the future? Or is this a recovery plan only option that we use this year and the B C D circles to support students?
Questions?
Just bring it up with that, right?
Comments?
I have a couple of comments. I think this is a good plan. So we've talked about maybe a little bit about the first day of school now change. Can you clarify the calendar just a little bit, Sean, so that people have the right expectation?
Yeah, so the first day of school for six through 12, if you, if you support this resolution, we go forward and request the days. Our sixth through 12th grade students would start school on the scheduled first day of school, they'd go to, they'd go to class full day. So that would be on September 7th. So the 7th, 8th, 9th, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, our K5 students would not go to school on their regular schedule. They would each have an appointment time where their family would come meet with the teacher in those three days. We already do that with kindergarten for the purpose of law kids assessment.
I think it's the 8th.
Or sorry, the 8th, 9th camp, I apologize. Monday's the 13th, that's right. So the 8th, 9th camp would be regular school for six through 12. Our K5s would have a time that they're coming in for a conference. Our kindergartners already do that, and regardless of what the board decides on this, we'd continue to do that for law kids assessment. This would make, have an impact on our first two fifth grades. And then they would all start class on Monday, September 15th.
Thank you, Sean. The only other comment I had was being too tragic or grab some data, try to quantify if this is helpful or not. I'm pretty sure it will be, but if we can get some data to support it.
I think that we, I've been thinking about that, figuring out how to isolate whether this is responsible for changes in academic performance will be pretty difficult, but certainly pulse and perception data, I think, that through surveys, it will help us understand what people see as the impact.
Is there any leftover information from stuff last year?
Last year was so disruptive, I would say.
Sean, would you?
I would, I would, and we can look to see if there's the, you know, the qualitative, qualitative data collection. I would say that emphasis for this work really began on feedback from families and students from the British. And saying, we believe this is something that should continue irregardless of COVID, right? So we're actually thinking about it in terms of learning recovery and feedback, but the truth is, yes, I think we could. I'll go back and ask some of our principals, did you collect in your survey forms any qualitative data there? Or were those things that were shared with you during the conference kind? But I would tell you, our principals are in that place of saying, yes, we receive positive feedback from students and families. But I'll ask, that's a good question to see, thank you. Could we pull something that shows what they did for this form?
So I, my whole thing has been for parents to see themselves as partners in this whole education effort that we're trying to do. And it, and the fact that we're asking them how their kids are to be, and trying and valuing them as a partner in all of this, I think, sends the message that, which is they're a big part of this whole thing we're trying to do. So I like this, and if it keeps, if it works, I think it would be a great way to invest our time in terms of parents realizing that their perceptions of their kid matters and will be helpful in the education of the kid. So I'm excited about seeing how this works. All right, I'd love to hear a motion to pass this resolution.
I'll move that we accept resolution number 012.22, waivers 182 school year requirement for confidence. I'll say it's got.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right.
Yes, perfect.
So now we're up 5:20, which is the time for sure.
Enter this on.
Yep, I see Drew here, so. Two.
Okay, great.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Let's make sure, yeah, I can hear you. Let's make sure that we have the volume up where everyone else can as well. All right, Drew, you should be, everyone should be able to hear you.
All right, I'm just gonna say, hey, just to test it out, our audio good?
You can totally hear you, yes.
Awesome. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, good evening, everyone. Appreciate you guys giving me a few minutes here to walk through board docs. If you've already seen it, this might be a little bit of a refresher. If not, I'll quickly get through as much as I can in this 10 minutes. But please feel free to have Becky pass my information along if there's any questions. Or if you want to reach out to me directly for any content, happy to provide. What I'm going to walk through today is just the board member view of board docs. Now, wanted to quickly share how we got to this screen. Typically, our customers in Washington will hyperlink their URL on their district's website. So if I hit their Board of Directors tab or the Agendas and Minutes tab, will automatically bring me to this featured page here, which is where we'll see any of our most recent or any upcoming content that we may have. That can be anything from meeting minutes, meeting agendas, documentation, newsletters, upcoming events. We can house our policy manual or different policy books on here as well as track our board goals. Now, I've kind of created a little mock site for you guys as a demo site, just to give you some transparency of, you know, what this might look on the public-facing side as well as your user member side. Again, from this featured page, as a board member, I can see that there's an upcoming July 14th meeting that's already been released. So if I'd like, can you hit my meeting? Notice how it pulls me to my meetings tab. And again, on that July 14th meeting, can view the agenda here. Now, the agenda is going to be laid out the same for each of our meetings. We'll have our agenda categories and items to this left side here. And then any of our supporting content, attachments, summaries, you name it, is going to be on this right side here. So very easy for us to include our attachments, one, eliminating the need to have paper as well as just declunking the agenda. So we can keep that agenda up as we open up attachments here. Apologies, my wifi is a little bit slow today. But again, no limit on the amount of attachments that we include per one agenda item. And there's also no file limit or file size limit. As a board member, I can keyword search a specific item, whether I'm in our meeting's reference with our categories of all of our meetings or inside the actual agenda itself. Always have the option to search by keyword. What we can also do as board members is this is a, a meeting that has not been released to the public yet. It's a July 14th meeting. I can come in here and actually take, you know, personal annotations, any questions, any talking points that will only be viewable by that individual's login, so completely secure. Next thing I wanted to show you is our online minutes recorder and digital voting feature. This is a great tool, whether we're meeting virtually or in person. What this will allow us to do is have our board secretary or whoever moderates or records our minutes run that meeting in real time. So in this MCP, right off the bat, I hit start meeting, that's going to record what time the meeting was called to order. We'll have a nice digital roll call here, we'll say all of our members are present. And then we'll start going through the agenda and typing our minutes in these action comments here. Saving as we go down, can always make edits afterwards. But let's get to an action item. Can see here, we have a June minutes approval, and I'll hit my motions tab. So it can quickly reference who motioned it, we'll say I did, then Crystal Clark seconded. And then we can take our votes by manual reply or verbal reply, I should say manually. Can always mark unanimous. Or we can also open up online voting. So if we have a laptop or tablet in the boardroom, even a mobile device, our board members can actually enter their votes themselves. Whether they're inside the agenda or just have board docs up, it'll prompt them to enter their vote here. I'll go ahead and hit yes for now, can always change that vote until that online voting session is over. And we can see here on the backend, we're seeing all of our members' votes come in in real time. I'll mark unanimous for now and save. What's nice with this feature is this resolution is going to show immediately for our board as well as the public. So if I go back into that July 14th meeting as a board member view, I can see that we're on item 2A because it's highlighted in the MCP. So always know where we're at. If my wifi will be good to me, we'll be able to see this final resolution. So one, this is updating for the board. Two, it's also updating for the public in real time as we take our modes throughout, excuse me, our votes throughout the meeting. Can scroll down and see that motion did carry. It's a very efficient tool to, to keep our public updated. We won't have to wait for next month's minutes to be approved to at least see our resolutions. What we also see a lot of our customers do is launch the scoreboard. So if you guys present a screen or have a big screen or a virtual stream, we can share the scoreboard in this MCP during the meeting. Nice to be able to see our votes coming in real time. And again, a nice place marker for our board as we go through the agenda, again, highlighting as we go through. If we have public comments, I know a lot of boards like this, we can always have our timer on there. Or if there's even a presentation or reporting, we can set time limits for people. So that's the backend of the MCP. Once we're done with the meeting, I'll go ahead and hit stop. Go back to that meeting date, simple as this, we're going to edit minutes. I'll go ahead and delete these. And by one click of a button, load minutes from MCP, that took everything that we just did in the MCP and recorded it as our minutes. So voting, roll call, minutes that we typed under each item. And then once these are voted on, we'll go ahead and hit release, which will give our, our public the option to view the agenda as well as view minutes here. If we do have board members that still want paper copies, absolutely. We can print the detailed version of the agenda or we can print the simple version. Simple version is just going to show items and categories. Detailed version is going to show any of that backend content. One thing I also wanted to show is for each agenda item, there's three levels of security. Public content, obviously what's made available on the public site. Administrative, which is typically anyone who's not directly on the board. And then our executive content is our highest level of security, which typically is just our board members. So if there's any private reporting that we need to post on the agenda, we'll post those attachments or that, you know, description or summary in this section here. So a great way to separate permissions of who's seeing what. If we have executive sessions, notice that there's a lock symbol next to this item. This will notify the public that we can see this item here. We will not be able to see any of the content related to that item. It's strictly locked strictly for our users. So that's the quick walkthrough on the agenda portion of board docs. Quickly, we'll show you how we can store our policies in here. Our support team, and we work very closely with WASD, we've been partnered with them for about eight years now, can work very closely with you guys on importing your, your current policies. And very easy to update and kind of manage from there. So whether we're in first or second reading, legal review, public comment, public review, very easy for us to navigate, see when it was last revised, last reviewed. And again, we can have multiple handbooks in here as well. I'll finish on this library section, I got two minutes left, it looks like. This is a great place just to post any, you know, generic or general information. Whether we want to subcategorize attachments, whether we want to have superintendent newsletters, board notes that go out every Friday, you name it. Great place to really make board docs a one-stop shop for any district-related material. Can also track events, which we saw on the featured page, so really just a calendar for upcoming events. Along with the MCP feature and the digital voting, I'd say our strategic goal tracker is also one of our fan favorites or customer favorites. This will allow you guys to manage and create board goals. Now, we just entered a new fiscal year, if we are working on goals. I've seen everything from strategic plans to contracts we're working on, to new hires, to COVID response, to policy updates, you name it. Just like with the general section, we can get very creative with the goals that we track in here. And what's nice with this is as our publishers are creating our agendas, we can tag these goals to agenda items. So we can always go back and reference, okay, when was the last time we discussed our student growth and development goal? Well, it looks like it was our upcoming July 14th meeting. So it can quickly navigate to that specific agenda item and can read up on the last time we discussed this goal. Lastly, I'll just finish with our search capabilities. So very easy for the public as well as our board members to keyword search. We kind of like to brag about it, we're one of the few solutions that can actually keyword search inside of attachments. So as the more thorough we are, obviously, you know, the more content we're going to be easily found. What we have in here as well is a meta-search. If you guys are curious of what other districts are discussing in Washington on COVID, this will search any of our board docs users' public-facing material. So if we wanted to see what neighboring districts we're discussing, or maybe we're just curious of, of specific policy for a district, we can actually type in by name. Obviously, it's a very generic search, but we can always reference our. But we can always reference our neighboring districts, or anyone in that state, their public-facing content here. So that's all I have for you guys today. That was a very, very quick walkthrough. Becky, I'm not sure if we have time for questions, or if we want to have those answered via email, but I appreciate you guys' time today, and open to take questions if you guys do have time.
Drew, you've been so efficient using that 10 minutes. I thought I'd just start by letting you kind of introduce yourself, so we can still know who you are.
I, I tried to get right to it, just, just for timing purposes, so sorry about that, guys.
So Drew, the question is, is, this is cloud hosted, is that correct?
So this is gonna be hosted on our servers, but it's ultimately your information. We do not have access rights to view any of your private content. Something I'll say on that is, in our 20 years of business, we've never had a server failure. And we've also never had a data breach, something that we spend a lot of money and time on each year with our development, is our security.
Yes, it's, it's an annual subscription fee, is that correct, Drew?
That is correct. So it is, WASTA does preset our pricing. So you guys do get a discounted rate through what, through that partnership with WASTA. And if we do sign for a year, you guys can cancel at any time, there's no obligations to have that full year. I will say, we do have a 99% retention rate for our customers. And after last year, we're about 5,000 in the US, 5,000 school districts, services, private schools and charter schools using board docs.
The districts are in Washington, and maybe the next question would be, how many districts are in our area?
So I think I sent Becky a full list of current subscribers in Washington State. That will have their public-facing websites on there as well, if you guys want to reference those. I'm more than happy to send that again, Becky. But I think right now, we have anywhere from 60 to 70, I want to say, current customers in Washington State, through WASTA, I should say.
So yeah, I had to go to their website for some meeting, and it was really handy, just to be able to click on whatever topic.
Yeah, I think we're just at the stage, you know, with, with, when we went into COVID, we were giving you paper board books before that started. And we shifted that, of course, by necessity, to doing our board books, like, kind of. And I think we're just in this stage of evaluating as we come out of it. I don't think we want to go backward to going back to paper, but it's, is, do we, do we maintain the system that we created, or do we go to a system like board docs that provides more management?
Yeah. I will say, a lot of districts are, are kind of where you guys are at right now. I will say, this last year has probably been our best year at board docs, just because of the need for the online management. If we ever do go back, God forbid, back to that, that virtual environment. Or even if we do have hybrid virtual, we have some board members joining virtually, others in person. Forgot to show you guys this, a great way to post our virtual stream on that meeting notice. So we won't have to worry about re-sending this out to our board members, as long as they log into board docs before they join that meeting. They're gonna see that virtual, that virtual meeting, whether that be Zoom, Google Meets, WebEx, you name it. So I'll just click this to join.
Well, is this a board decision to move forward, or is this a district office decision?
Well, I think we can, what I wanted to do is we have this chance to this presentation, and ultimately, it's probably a board decision, I would say, in this one. So I think what I want to do is to get a chance to consider it, and then we can talk about whether that's something that we put on future agenda.
So my only comment is, I am looking at this and listening, it's really, I can't think about Becky, I'm thinking about you, because you're the ones that would be part of this. It's not gonna be us, and setting up the agenda, loading everything in, having to do all of that. So I definitely want to hear your thoughts as well.
Certainly. So we'll have that opportunity, perhaps for some further discussion on that. But, but wanted that opportunity for you to see this tool, and kind of understand what it is, as we're thinking about that. Yeah, there's some, definitely work on, on our end, but we're gonna, I mean, that's, some of that's work, we're going, we do keep setting up those meetings, either PDF or, or through this system. But I, I think it's, you know, that discussion is, do we want something that manages as, as much as what this does, or do we continue on the PDF type format? So Drew, thank you very much for your time, and, and we'll extend this discussion and, and get back if we need further information to, to make some decisions around this. Unless there's other questions, I don't think that, though.
No, all my comments and questions are best reserved for.
Right. Well, I appreciate it, guys. Hope you all enjoy your rest of your evening. And yes, please feel free to reach out if there's any questions or need for additional content. Thanks again. Alrighty, bye-bye.
Is Sam going to be here?
Yes. Snuck right in over in that last presentation. So, so we don't have a decision on board docs tonight, but really wanted to take your time with it, so we get some open discussion about whether that's a tool that we went off, uh, taking on to this. So. Um, so our next presentation, we have Sam Gimli here from, from Port of Olympia, to share some information about upcoming projects. So, set up your PowerPoint.
Give me a clicker, can I sit over here while you're running, you're over near me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me this evening, and glad to see everybody's wrapping with the same issues that we are, to how do we come out of this virtual meeting, you know, just for a virtual meeting, and go, what do we do next? So. Great, well, I am Sam Gimli, I'm the Executive Director of the Port of Olympia, and we're going to take a few minutes of your, your time to talk about a large development proposal that, that we have coming forward. And action that is coming before our commission, that Port of Olympia commission, for consideration this month. And it is to possibly enter into a development agreement between the City of Tonewater and the Port of Olympia as a property owner. So I'm gonna go, go through things, and, you know, I'm happy to take questions, you know, during, at the end, how, how it works best for you, so. I always like to start to kind of, because most people don't know what a port district is, I don't know, I'll be that quick, Frank. We are a special purpose government, and ports in Washington State are really unusual in, in all of the, the nation, in that we have elected boards, we have 75 districts in, in Washington State, which is more than any other state by a lot, by, by, by a whole lot. And some part of it, my history lesson, they know of how ports were formed, but for tonight, our primary mission is one of economic development. However, we do have at the Port of Olympia, we use a, what is akin to a triple bottom line approach, where we really seek to balance our economic development with the both our value of environmental stewardship, and quite frankly, our responsibility of environmental stewardship. And then the maintaining of, of community assets that are both things like, the marina is owned by the public, we need to take care of it for you. And as well as just some of the, the amenities that we have, such as Port Plaza, the Billy Franklin Junior Trail, et cetera. So I completely stolen this next metaphor from Eric Johnson, who was the former head of the Washington Public Corps Association, and he says, ports are the platters of local governments. And, you know, we're kind of, you know, a duck, but maybe a mammal, and and in that is that we really are, we are a public agency, and we have all the requirements that the state's, you do public records, you know, transparency, doing our business in the, the light day, et cetera, and, and fiduciary duty to, to the public. But we earn two-thirds of our revenue in a competitive workplace. We are enterprise formal government, so we earn surplus, and then we, we invest that surplus into creating other amenities, or just keeping up our assets, et cetera. So we are very businesslike in, in, in that way. And as I tell people, we have to go out and hunt for our, our, our revenue, and it's, while we do collect a, a small tax levy, that is by, by far the minority of how we receive our revenue. We have had a recently just adopted 2019, a Vision 2050 process. It was, I just joined the organization, as this was being finalized, the body of the convention for acceptance. It was a very comprehensive, it was quite sophisticated public outreach process, where we really went out and asked the community, what, what do you think we should do for, for the next 30 years? And in that, you know, we had well over 10,000 individual comments that were submitted, we were out at all times, you know, the fairs, brews, brew fest, we have everything. And then we had a, a community team of 27 community leaders, Tim Stokes of the Southern San community college, John Dome, CEO, the manager of Tonewater, there have been myriad of both public sector, private sector folks, that helped sort through that qualitative data, and come up with actions and tactics, as well as strategic goals. Now, all of them are gonna get done in the next five years, that's why it's called Vision 2050, and not Vision 2055. Out of this, one of these strategies is really to market our current assets, and to really put them into productive use. So from this, we have developed, and although some of the history, we went out to the marketplace and really started marketing some of our area that is known as the New Market Industrial Campus. You will know, does this have a pointer on here? Yeah, so you know, your Bush Mill School down here. This property is, it's interesting that it's owned by Port of Olympia. It was deeded to the port from the City of Olympia, who had gotten it from the US government as the original airfield, Bush Airfield, that was created. So it is, has deed restrictions on it from FAA, and it can only be used to support airport operations, airport-related industrial activities, or things that are permitted in there. It's a little bit different, because you'll say, well, you know, Boomchak is out there, and, you know, but, but they are that they, they fit within the land use code, and then those revenues are, are used to support the, the infertility that, that the airport. So in 2019, we really started marketing the property and starting some negotiations with a corporation called Panteron Development Corp. They are a large-scale developer, and we ended up coming up with a option area that is here shaded in purple. And again, probably all of you are, are familiar with this, but according to Tonewater Boulevard, up here at the top, I-5. And then this, I believe, is 83rd, so that there runs right back by the school. So as we, as we went out, and this area is also complex, so it wasn't complicated enough, but with the FAA, and we also have the endangered species, and the habitat conservation plan that is being developed jointly with the City of Tonewater, so the port's been a very active partner in that. And so we're kind of in the final polishing steps of being able to send over our draft plan to US Fish and Wildlife. And so, so there's quite a few layers of complexity in here, how you can actually develop this property. However, we did enter into a lease option area, so they, they have not actually leased it yet, they have an option to lease it. And then we both have a period of due diligence to, to go through, to show that we can complete the habitat conservation plan. Have we done stake or, and outreach, and really kind of seen that there's community concerns, et cetera. So that has been an ongoing process. And we are now at the point where we are, we have been in conversations with the City of Tonewater, talking about what is called a development agreement. And a development agreement, if you're not familiar with it, in, in land use terms, is an agreement that comes from a jurisdiction such as the City of Tonewater, that controls the land use, and a developing party that wants to develop the property. Typically, they are that the developing party wants something that's not actually found in the current code, like they want something in, in increasing density, or they want some type of something beyond water condition, additional use permit would, would allow. And in exchange for that, they offer considerations such as, you know, some public amenities, oftentimes there are additional trails, or sort of park properties within the development, et cetera. So we've been involved in that, that process with the City of Tonewater, and we are just now taking it to our commission for consideration. I will also be speaking with Tonewater City Council next week, and giving them this draft. We'll take that input, and then we'll get back at the end of the month. Our commission will take action on it, if they approve it, then it will go to the Tonewater City Council for their consideration, and hopefully, a, a, approval. And then at that point, again, it's a, it's a agreement between the city and the port, with the developer kind of as a, not as a signatory, but as an interested party, that the person, that, that the party is actually gonna do the work. So a little bit complex how this we see and, and stuff happens. We do have, they have a, Panteron has a 10-year option on the property right now, and they have been already been, been doing their due diligence, and doing some master planning, and I'll, I'll be going over that. A lot of this hinges on our ability to, to have the habitat conservation plan approved by those fish, and then eventually adopted by, by the city. So in this, now hopefully I can read all, all these that I have here. There's been quite a bit of back and forth between the, the city and, and the port, and they have the sick things that they would like, like to see. And we really feel that, that we have met, met those. When we don't have the classes on. So I, I think I said that, the first one is, and I think this is really important, the port is not asking for any deviation from the existing code. We're just asking, please, City of Tonewater, just review applications based on your, your existing code, and the, what are called the overlays in there. And that the city also asks, like, you know, we know with the, the marketplace out, many of you have seen this, is that there is a, a marketplace for very large warehouses and distribution centers. But please see if you can do a diversity of, of businesses within the area, a diversity of building sizes. We brought, brought that back. That we would have, we would, we would actually shrink down what's called an overlay area of where warehouses over, or any type of building over 200,000 square feet size, that we would actually shrink that down from within the existing code, down to an area west of Center Street, and I'll show that, that, that to, to you on the map. And this is a little, right? Yeah. Pedestrian facilities, and then also, you know, make, make sure that there's a lot of concern about traffic by your so fine. That we provide a pedestrian trail for, for license pedestrians, bicycles and pedestrians, that we would really look at having a tree retention area. We've heard a lot of public comment about how retaining as many trees as possible. We think that we have come up with a plan that does that. And then maintain a really kind of campus-like setting, that is, for, for those of you who are familiar with area, like around Cardinal Plaza, so that, you know, there's, there's some nice big leafy trees there, and there's some broad swales, et cetera. We've also looked at our stormwater management strategies, directing the, the truck traffic to the north. I think this is a one that has been expressed. I think this is a one that has been expressed by the community of concern for if all the truck traffic will try to go down Kennedy Street, pass, pass the school down to ninety third. That the developer handles the port and most of the developer will pay for any utility relocations. That we would also advocate the continued use of the capital little league within the area. And then last but certainly not least, that we would provide for ten acres along Center Street for the city of Tom Water to develop a community center. So translate all that into a map. So if you can see here, we've got Center Street that is, that's running that down here. And so we do have a diversity of, and these are, these are not, this is very conceptual. These are not building permit applications, but yeah, it's, it's a way to find out, to lay it out. But we do have a diversity of building sizes. One of the things that is really, I think, very important to use is that the traffic circulation would be internal to the development and everything will be directed back out to Center Street and then north of Tom Water Boulevard. So we would actually terminate Kennedy Street and Kennedy Street would no longer connect with the portion out there from the middle school. We do have tree retention areas, both here, giving a good buffer in between the, the school and the industrial area. We have a tree buffer along eighty third to maintain that tree-like, tree-lined road. Another tree retention area up here. And then lots of internal protection of trees as required by Tom Water City Code. See, the other things, the other ones that I would like to point out are a trail, regional trail that would be coming down along the outside of the property and then connecting up to your property. That's very conceptual where we'll put the city of Tom Water and the school district to make sure that's the best location for that. But initial reaction by city of Tom Water was that they liked that, that location for, for a trail. We're also going to be, one of the things that we really are paying attention to is this entryway of a Tom Water Boulevard down on the Center Street to really have that be kind of a nice gateway entryway. We are working with the Secretary of State for this property here, for them to build their state library and archive building. All indications is that's going to be, as they determine an iconic building, it won't be just a typical commercial building development. We would expect that it will get many, many visits. There will be a lot of people who do everything from geology research to things there. We have also said that we will selectively market this property here to make sure that we have, that see if we can attract another development that says that same thing, kind of matches the feel of the entry into the area. This yellow area here is what we are designating that will be offered to the city at no cost to the city for their use to build a community center slash recreation center slash aquatic center, basically whatever they choose it to be. That again, will be offered to them for the term of this lease, which is, once we start entering into leases, they'll be for fifty five years with plus some options that could take it up to seventy years. This is a significant, if we were to do a net present value evaluation on it, it'd be a significant contribution to the city. And even if we were to look for multiple prices, this is a several million dollar piece of property. Let's see if I missed anything else here. One of the things that we're looking at here, this is International Wood Products here, and they are a local company. It's going to be the, one of the first development, so it would be a local company that would be expanding in here. And then the second building that it looks like they are, they have some really strong interest in would be this building here. And this is actually going to be a manufacturing facility. I can't tell you who, who, who that is because I don't know. But the developer has to, it would be manufacturing weekly for that, or if it's in values too, that, that, this is all not just from, just all, all distribution. See, what else have I had here? Yep, again, and then what we are asking for in exchange for all this is that Tom Water vest us to the existing code for twenty years. And then they, they would then review all the applications that were in the existing code.
Sorry, I guess you're asking the city of Tom Water for that?
Yes, exactly, exactly. There we go. Okay, this is just a very conceptual rendering, but this is if you were entering, turning off of Tom Water Boulevard, going south along Center Street. And showing that, again, we're going to, you know, retain quite, quite a few trees and, and also plant additional trees so that as you're driving down Center Street, it's not as if you're going to be driving down just a very large wall of a building. That may be street stage, you have some, some screening. And, and then the street would need to be upgraded with pedestrian facilities and bike lanes, et cetera. And then again, just a very, very highly conceptual idea of what a community center could look like. So some of the benefits of this, again, we are, the port's main mission is economic development and job creation. There has been an economic impact analysis done on this, showing that when this area is developed, not to its full potential, it would be between seventeen thousand, oh, seven thousand, one thousand seven hundred and fifty jobs and twenty six kind of direct jobs created. There are also quite a few more indirect and what's called induced jobs. Those are the things like, you know, the restaurant traffic goes up and things. Quite a bit in, in local wages and about three hundred and fifty four million in total economic production increase. So we think that this is very true to our mission, that it will help, help the community of Tom Water and add along the benefit. Some of that benefit we show by looking at, and this is a projection based on what I, the rough square footage and estimation of the value of those buildings. And I think that top number you don't find interesting. And this is when I, and I, I don't mean to be crass by this, by any means, but that comes with no students. You know, so it is an increase in the tax base that doesn't demand additional services from you. And in, in my world, it's part of the importance of industrial lands in any community is that they can bring this type of a tax benefit without stressing the local school district. This is what we'd expect from during the construction phase. And we do expect that the market is very, very robust right now. We, we expect that this area would, would build out in short order. Again, this, this is just showing this area for where we're expecting the manufacturing facility to go in. We partner with New Market Skill Center and our communication gal, Jenny Foley Jones. She sits on the, gonna have to, on behalf of the CTE.
Oh, on their advisory council.
Yeah, exactly. So one of the, I didn't tell you that Jenny and I share is a real passion for introducing high schoolers to the trades and the job opportunities that, that are there. I think that this is an opportunity for your school districts, other school districts to look at, you know, what, what are the workforce opportunities? And while that's not our direction, we definitely partner with that and see that that's, that's one of the symbiotic relationships we hope to have. So our, our process moving forward is, again, we have our, our board considers things in two steps. So we have an advisory and then an action. And so we're having it as advisory on the twelfth of July, that's next Monday. And on Tuesday, we'll be going to Tom Water City Council on their work session. We'll incorporate feedback from, from both our board and the Tom Water Council and then bring back to the commission for action on the twenty sixth of, of July. And then we don't have a firm schedule on what will happen in, in August. But we are hoping for, for consideration in, in action in, in August. So I'm happy to take and answer any questions. I, I will tell you that I come with an ask this evening, and that is first for your feedback. And if there are any outstanding concerns that you, that you might have and anything that we haven't, you know, considered, we by all means want to know that and we want to be able to move forward, go to our commission satisfaction that, you know, we've been doing the, the state core outreach and that we're really trying to, to address concerns as best we can. And then with that, if we are successful in doing that, that's going to be for some type of support for this, whether it be a letter of support or perhaps just, you know, authorizing your staff to speak at one of our commission meetings or even simply kind of, you know, granting me permission to say, I've spoken with you, I've heard your concerns, and we're effectively addressing them. So I'll leave that at your discretion, that I really would like to go back to my commission and say, you know, we're, we're trying to be as upfront as possible, let people know where our plans are and incorporate and, and address those concerns as we move forward. So happy to answer your questions.
When you say you're asking for our support, is that during your presentation to Tom Water City Council?
That, that would be fantastic as well. I mean, I'd like to be able to say to my commission that, that I've spoken with you, but I would absolutely love to be able to say that to Tom Water City Council, that I, you know, spoken with the school board, you know, heard any outstanding concerns and hope to address.
Oh, my only thing would be, and maybe Sean's already done this or reached out, but has the Bush Mill School community been spoken to about all of this? They know what's about to fall and everything goes according to plan? We're one, we're the board.
This is the first, this is the first presentation that's ever happened out to them.
Right.
Okay, I'm just sorry, I think I'm picking down the road for parental comment, community involvement. But a class that felt obvious there's issue with my left bill to me, it was wonderful. However, you have to be mindful of that.
Absolutely, and we're, we're happy to engage in whatever ways is possible for, for us. We have communication staff, so we can, we can come to any type of parent meetings. We can, if you have any type of list serve, we, you can develop some infographics and things that we can, I think you receive those. We can send those out, you know, direct them to our website, direct them to our meetings, et cetera. So we're happy to engage in whatever way that you. Yeah.
We're putting it out there.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, go ahead, Scott. So you're saying that the, this development is in either direct or indirect service of the airport. Is there plans for it to be an actual functioning airport outside of just private airplanes?
You mean commercial service?
Yes.
We don't have any plans for commercial service, that's really driven by, by, by the market. We don't have a carrier that is interested at, at this moment. We are, the Olympia area is being considered by the governor's task force that is working on, where's kind of the next regional airport going to go? The Port Olympia Commission declined to put ourselves forward as a sponsor of that. However, that is a very fluid situation, I think that any effort is ongoing. And if I had a crystal ball, I think we know how that's going to turn out.
I have a few, I have a few comments. So for, I want to talk about the airport. What I've been told the airport was built for, for two bombers, it's not meant to actually handle any type of real commercial traffic. Is that accurate or is that?
I wouldn't say that, that, that's entirely accurate, because in passing a commercial, we've had a number of commercial carriers in, in the past. And, and it could handle a certain class of aircraft right now. It could even be potentially expanded to, to carry more. But, but it was built, it was actually built originally before Warlord Two. It was Bush Airfield, I don't want to quote the name. But it was, it was much before Warlord Two.
So my concern is also with Lori, that the Bush parents are not aware of this at all. I also have a concern is about, I heard commitments to Tom Water School District and they're going to curb traffic, but I've not, not agreed to anything. This is essentially the first we've heard other than America.
Oh, no, that's that we would curb traffic.
Right, so I guess I will never form one. Tell me, I don't believe you, show me, I might, let me do it, then I do. So it's also seems, and I don't know how we're going to get this with Bush parents, it seems very rushed. It seems more of a checkpoint versus you're actually getting our commitment to it, you're wanting this approved in August. So it does seem very rushed, I don't think we're able to get Bush parents' response to that, or even the district's response to that, it is summer time, so. I had some other concerns, you don't have a firm development timeline. All of the economic growth and tax revenue and jobs is not committed at all, it's, it's on a timeline. It doesn't have a thing, or any type of commitments to it. The only thing we do have is a ten year option, which means literally this company can sell this property for ten years, if I'm not mistaken. So I do have some big concerns about this. Again, with Lori, I like the outcome and the sales job, if you will, what the outcome may be in twenty fifty or twenty forty or maybe twenty thirty. But right now, I have some concerns myself personally, so.
So to address a few of those, we do have a timeline that's actually being developed in the document itself. And so we did craft the, the option that they couldn't just sit on it for, for ten years. We were very, we were very concerned with that as the core ourselves. So we have some what are called take down requirements in there. They have to act within a certain number, a certain time period after the habitat conservation plan is approved. So there has to be something, things before we require something of them, they actually have to have a viable pathway for them to get permits. And so we have take down requirements, and I just got, not remember them off the top of my head, it's certainly not the ten, ten year period. As well as we have then in the draft in a local agreement, that would be between the city of Tom Water and the port, requirements to have the community benefits such as the trail development, things happen within at most a ten year period after the habitat conservation plan or tied to percentage of, of the leased area being developed. So we tie it to where as they develop property, there's requirements for them to put the amenities in. We do have, and I absolutely respect that, you know, proof is in the pudding. And, but it is, it, we, we do know from the developer, but they do have some very strong proposals and people that are ready to sign all leases as soon as we get things developed or get things approved, approved by the city. So I think that they, our expectation is that this would really develop probably in the next five years. You know, so it's, it's that, that's strong, that's demanded market. Again, happy to work with Sean and staff to get, to get word out to Tom Water residents. And I was, and I, I've done enough public process of like, whenever you go out to the. And I've done enough public process of like, whenever you go out to things, like, you know, it can feel rushed. And that, yeah, we've been working on how does it have a good deal of public process on this for well over a year. That doesn't mean that we've come to you before, so I respect that and want to make sure that what we can do, whatever, to communicate with your events, because they will obviously have concerns. We do think that the impacts to them are well mitigated, because we'll have that buffer between the school. We won't have additional traffic going there, again, that will be memorialized in the interlocal agreement too. So it won't just be a verbal promise, it will actually be memorialized in the agreement.
I know, we were talking about partnership, or not necessarily partnerships, but when you're speaking about the CTE group and that type of thing, it would be great to see their internship possibility, if there's a way to build that into whatever deals get made, internship possibilities for our students. The other, it's chicken and the egg with this stuff when you're trying to get a plumber. Yes, you're absolutely right, you should come to the board first. And now it's trying to figure out how to communicate this out to families in a way where they can ask their questions. I'm not sure how much input they would have, but they just probably have tons of questions.
Sure.
So how would we be able to set something up so they can ask those questions? That would be great to be able to. That was really, I'm sorry, I had to step out, I didn't want to, it was, I had nothing to do with it, just my family. But yeah, I'm most concerned about the traffic with access, we do have our buses out there, and they need to be on time, and trying to get them in and out of there. I anticipate that this helps with the homeless, you know, issue that you have on the property there. And we can actually have people, and so what are you doing about that right now, if this gets up and going?
So we have a regular walk-through of our properties by court staff. We don't know of any larger encampments of any kind. I can't guarantee that there's not, you know, kind of, you know, tents or people not camping out, and if there is, that's a grand threat. But we do regularly survey the area. We are different than other, this is part of the, we're just different than a lot of other local governments in that we have no authorization to provide health and maintenance services. And so not only can't, we can't provide for camping, and we're not affected by the Boise decision in the same way that other local governments are. So, yeah, so we do, because we just don't have any statutory authority to provide health and maintenance services. So the short answer is that we're out there regularly surveying, trying to keep more in contact with services, and we do account for them, but making sure that they're not setting up any type of encampment.
And the buildings that we have right now are on court property, and so what is that? I forget what lease, you told us that you...
So the Bush little school, it's a 100-year lease, and Mel has that surveying. Bush little school, I believe, is until 2060. I think that support services is five more years.
Okay.
I'm doing this from memory.
Probably a 70-year lease, that's our statutory maximum, I think.
And there is, I mean, you heard in there that in the plan there was talk about possible terminus of Kennedy Street up there, the property. So what changes traffic flow around the little school a bit in that? Because people coming down from Kennedy down, they're not longer paying off, and cut across on Union Third, I believe.
Right, correct, yeah. And then we also, and within the internal circulation, we certainly want to work with the district to make sure, because your bus warrants kind of will be islanded then there, make sure that you have access all the way around it, and really to make sure that that's accommodated in ways that work for you, so. Yeah, question?
That would, terminating Kennedy Street would actually accommodate the question around traffic.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Would no longer be a threat. And that is just that Kennedy Street and, I think, I don't know, that must be still court property, that's not public driveway on that.
Court property right up in your section that we consider.
Yeah, yeah. So we would keep it up to kind of the boundary of your law line there, near where the well is. And then, but it would be terminated for any north-south traffic, and it just be internal circulation. But that is court property, it's not a public driveway. Yeah. All right. Lori has a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if Sean had to reply to my point. If this law goes through, it looks like it's steamrolling ahead, whether it was supported or not. Is it a five-year timeframe to where we would see the tax revenue related dollars from the district?
It could be, it would be based upon when the buildings are built, because it's based, that those tax projections are based upon the building valuation, so that's where you see the increase, and you would see that increase to the school there. So depending on how, I mean, we actually have two of the buildings that could well be built within the next three years that could take up a large chunk of this property. So you might not see that 1.5, but you might see 90,000 or a million, or something here in short order. We do expect that it won't develop out within a short timeframe. But you would start getting that valuation as soon as kind of the certificate of occupancy is, and it gets on the tax rolls, and the taxes start to be collected.
So that's a form of this. These things here, how are we going to do for our district?
Yep, absolutely, yeah. So as soon as the buildings are built and it gets on the assessors' rolls, they start collecting it. Yeah, and it's a little, you know, it's at least four X size tax, so we, it's a little bit different than the property tax, but in essence, it's the property tax, we have to send it in, and then it gets back out. All right, any other questions? Anything else, I'd give it to Sean.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much for your time, and really thank you so much for the loan and your package. Great. And Sean has my contact, and any of you having follow-up questions or things, feel free to reach out to me. We have frequently asked questions, you know, things that we could send out to parents right away, so that if you're comfortable with that.
Maybe we can have Lori be, or work with your communications person about putting something together for our Bush families? Maybe that would help.
And with their opportunities for information.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want us to even do it. Great, great, all right, we won't do that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sue.
So is there any other business that we got to do? All right, we're going to recess the regular meeting and begin a board retreat, which is expected to last about 10 hours.